I just want to make their books.
That one's just, uh, it's like they're still higher quality.
It's not showing what's down there. It was in my, uh, it was in my spam box.
I just use the YouTube link and that's fine too.
Well, you said this was a higher quality.
Yeah.
Throw it about the screens. I just, I flipped the screens off so I could see that on the backside. Okay, so that's it right there. Okay, good luck. I'll probably have to sign, like, about five timeouts from now on.
Okay.
When you start the presentation, but, uh, if so, I'll walk you around. Okay, great, thanks.
Good evening and welcome to the May 11th meeting of the City of Campbell Zoo Zoning Board of Appeals, a volunteer advisory board appointed by the city commission. Mr. Eldridge, would you please conduct a roll call?
Turpinin?
Here.
Work?
Yeah.
Van den Haenberg?
Here.
Harrington?
Here.
McReynolds?
Here.
And Holder?
I'm here.
For each public hearing, public comments will be accepted during the time as indicated on tonight's meeting agenda. Community members that wish to provide public comments over the phone can call 888-382-9556 during the public comment period. They will enter a queue and will be prompted to offer their comments in turn. Callers will be commenting to the board live and will no longer be able to leave a recorded message. Mr. Eldridge, are there any announcements or changes to the original agenda?
The only announcement I want to make tonight is under E, discussion and action items. Uh, we do need to, uh, talk about, uh, the board vice chair position and, uh, filling that position. Uh, oh, I'm going to mention this right now because I'm still trying to get, we're trying to troubleshoot this, but speaking of the call-in comments, we're having trouble getting the login to work right now, so I hope to have that, uh, ironed out by the time we get to the public hearing for these cases, uh, but I just wanted to mention that as well.
Thank you. We will move on to the acceptance of last month's minutes. Are there any changes to the minutes? Hearing done, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I'm going to approve the minutes for the zoning board appeals meeting on April 13, 2023.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please signify by saying aye. Motion carried. Now that the meetings from the last month have been approved, we will move on to our meeting procedure. I will now explain our procedure for tonight's public hearing. For each request, the secretary will read the application into the public record. The applicant or representative will then have 10 minutes to provide their comments. Upon approaching the podium, we ask that the applicant or representative speak slowly, stating their name and/or organization and address so that we can enter that information into the record correctly. Following that, the public is invited to step up to the podium, starting with those who wish to speak in favor of the application. Slowly and clearly state your name and address and present your comments within the three-minute time limit. Following that, the public is invited to step up to the podium with those that wish to speak in opposition of the application or otherwise to comment and do the same. Next, we will hear any call-in comments that will be aired for the board and audience. After this, we will close the public hearing on the request. Once the public hearing is closed, the board will then conduct what is called a finding of fact, where the board states what they feel are the facts of their request. The board must approve the finding of fact. Therefore, the first vote you hear is not a ruling on the request, but a vote on the finding of fact. Then the board discusses the request in order to determine a ruling. The board reserves the right to ask questions of persons who have already spoken, even though the public comment portion is closed. Once discussion is ended, the board will move on to a roll call vote. A full board consists of six members with four votes required to grant a non-use variance or a use variance. Will the board secretary now read the first application into the record?
An application for a variance for provisions of the zoning ordinance has been filed with the zoning board of appeals by Mount Zion Baptist Church and Hollander, excuse me, Hollander Development Company. Um, the applicant is requesting a dimensional variance from chapter 50 dash 7.2 to authorize an additional eight off-street parking spaces, which will allow a total of 64 off-street parking spaces, where a total of 56 was, excuse me, previously approved on June 9, 2022, with a prior variance for 17 additional off-street parking spaces. Please note that this request will not change the zoning classification of the properties.
Thank you. Will the applicant please step up to the podium, sign in, provide your name, and explain the request in the 10 minutes provided?
Good evening and thank you all for hearing our application. My name is Jason Muniz. I'm vice president of Hollander Development. I'm the lead developer, uh, for the, the project in question, and we are proposing to develop a 70-unit affordable housing development for seniors, um, on this, this site. In June 9th of 2022, we were before this, this body to make a similar request, um, for parking variance based on a discrepancy between MISTDA's, uh, Michigan State Housing Development Authority's, um, design guidelines and, and what the zoning allowed for, um, on this project, particularly that the local zoning was allowing for up to half of a parking space per unit, while MISTDA's recommendation is a one-to-one parking ratio for senior housing. In reading the staff report for, for our application today, I see that there is a strong implication there that MISTDA has implicitly blessed our, our existing site plan, um, with the 56 units of, of parking. I, I do want to clarify that that is not the case. Rather, in this project, we are using MISTDA's, um, tax credits through, through MISTDA, but we are no longer using MISTDA financing for our debt, so their, their guidelines, um, are wholly waivable at this point. MISTDA still strongly encourages and recommends a one-to-one parking ratio as a minimum, and based on our experiences with similar projects, we, we feel pretty strongly that, um, less than that is, is a risky proposition for the residents that we have here. I'd like to invite, uh, a couple of our partners from our design team up, uh, during my 10 minutes, if I, if I could as well, to further address some of those issues. Mike Flynn from BICE. And then one of the things that I just want to make sure everybody understands is that these 70 units are meant to be deeply affordable for the residents of the community. Our rents, uh, will begin at about $325 and go up to just over a thousand, but the majority of them will be, uh, designed for, to be affordable for people at or below 60% of the area median income, and those rent numbers include utilities. So, uh, we feel this is a badly needed, um, development everywhere in the state, but particularly in this neighborhood. Mike?
Thanks, Jason. My name is Mike Flynn. I'm an architect with BICE, Architects and Engineers, um, and, um, we are, um, the architects and engineers, designers of the project, working with Mount Zion and Hollander on the project. And I just want to, uh, state a couple of things, if I may, on the parking and really go back to when we were here last year, uh, June, in looking for that variance between the one-to-one ratio that is recommended and the .5 to one ratio that is part of the, uh, current zoning regulation. And just remind everybody of some of the deliberations that took place at that time was that the, the difference or, uh, of the .5 to the one-to-one ratio is significant, and it, it seemed to us that, really, we're not talking about, uh, assisted living, we're talking about independent living, and this is people 55 and older, that, uh, I'm older than 55 and I haven't given up my car and I don't intend to for a while, so the, the need to have parking at, at a facility for housing is really there, and I would, it was even talked about last year, the idea of maybe revisiting that zoning regulation as pertains to senior independent living and making it more in line with standard multifamily, which is the typical one-to-one ratio. So, just real quickly going through some of the criteria that you all take a look at, uh, in voting for or against a particular variance, I would tend to go through and really take a look at that first, and, and maybe that, uh, is something to take into consideration. I would also, uh, ask you to consider the fact that we were, uh, at great length to, um, uh, attend to the zoning regulation as it stands now, and, and the intent of that is to create a building environment where the building comes out to the street and we've ensconced the parking within that area. I think you can see that in the development. So the impact to the surrounding neighbors really isn't a negative as far as increased asphalt around buildings. The buildings enclosed are wrapped around, their arms around the, the asphalt parking.
I'd like to invite Dr. Moore up as well.
Lastly, we'd like to invite Dr. Addis Moore, um, who is also a development partner with us, with, from Mount Zion Baptist Church, uh, to address some concerns.
Good evening. Uh, good being here today. Um, thank you for hearing, um, this request. Uh, the reason we wanted this housing project period on North Side is so that our residents, senior predominant, the black residents, can age in place in a way that would be beneficial and safe to them. Oftentimes in our community, individuals are not able to receive the benefit of, of their investment. Uh, we know particularly on the North Side, uh, for years and years, on the privileged, on the, uh, funded, and for many times seems like, uh, have not been receiving the type of care that other communities have been receiving. And so the vision behind it, knowing, uh, individuals in our community that needed a safe place, uh, to live, an affordable place, a place that really they would be proud of and our community would be proud of, and that was kind of the reason we, uh, we decided it, and it was our, our view all along that individuals that had cars and vehicles would not have to park on the street. I think that that is a severe hindrance, in particular to seniors as they age and have medical conditions and have to get out of their cars and then navigate off the streets, I think, which is dangerous in any neighborhood now. And to me, that's just unthinkable, that a senior would have to do that, uh, individuals that have conditions with walking and, and conditions with other conditions that would slow them down. And to have them have that type of barrier in a project like this, I think does a disservice to the way we look at them and care for them. And so we strongly urge, I really wanted the one-on-one, the 70 for 70, um, but 64, we need them inside, we don't need anybody on the street. Uh, we care too much about our individuals, care too much for our seniors for that to happen, and as we see those individuals on an everyday basis, and as a church, uh, we actually minister to those individuals, we know their needs, and we know their circumstances, we know their families, and any way we can make their lives, uh, more pleasant, I believe it is our responsibility as a city, as a community, particularly a city that cares about all of our citizens, citizens, this should not be substandard, it should be more than adequate for every, every one of our citizens. So, as you contemplate, as you make the decisions, uh, I requested you would favor it, um, grant those 64 for the sake of seniors and, and we, oftentimes, we don't look at the human person, uh, and I think we have laws so that we can have order, but it should not neglect the human being, because we're talking about people here, uh, particularly, and I think how we treat our seniors is really how we care for our community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would staff like to make any comments related to this request?
Thank you. Yes, I would like to make a few comments related to the request. Sorry, we were really close to having the, uh, call-in comment, uh, matter sorted out, so we're still working on that with IT. But, but as far as the parking goes, um, I, I understand the concern, and it's not that we have concluded the discussions at this point, but the, you know, as far as if there's some way to break out senior parking as far as the calculation and the ordinance. However, um, what, what staff was really leaning on here is, is the additional parking that was granted last year and the fact that there is a significant amount of, of on-street parking, uh, around the site, and that that is, uh, something we can work with the developer on to make sure that there is, uh, you know, you know, ample parking, you know, curbside parking, but I, I do realize that that's not a, uh, direct replacement for some of the overnight parking that's being discussed. So, I, I did want to point that out, and I do understand there's, um, you know, one other thing that's kind of been talked about that I don't recall being mentioned last year was, um, you know, the, uh, the programming onsite and, and the, the staff and so forth, you know, where some of that can be, be, uh, you know, out on the edge of the street. I understand that, you know, it'd be desirable to have some of that parking, you know, in the site as well. So, um, you know, ideally, we'd like to see this move forward and just have a focus more on the on-street parking, not taking away more green space on the site, um, but, uh, I understand where the, you know, the applicant is at and, and the development of this nature. So, um, you know, I'm available if the board has any specific questions.
I have a question. Am I to understand that you had an expectation for them to, the city staff, you all wanted them to utilize off-street parking? Am I, I'm nodding? Okay. That's what I'm to understand, that you wanted them to use off-street parking versus to create space for this variance to be granted?
Well-
Or in addition to?
The off-street parking is available, and because this is senior housing, typically not all the seniors have cars, so that's why the calculation is the way, you know, is how it's identified as half a space per unit. So what I'm trying to say is for daytime activities, there is on-street parking that can address that supplemental need for more parking spaces.
How does that, I'm not clear on, like, how does that contend with what the request is? Is there any contention with the request with that?
Well, I, and you could have the applicant clarify, but, you know, their, their desire is to, you know, to have more parking on the site, uh, thereby, i-if there are, um, additional residents that have cars, you know, or visitors, it would allow them, you know, that would allow the additional residents to have their cars right in the facility as well as visitors wouldn't have to walk as far to get into the facility. If, if the parking spaces were in the lot between the two buildings versus one of the surrounding side streets.
Oh, okay.
So, so having the parking on the private property versus, you know, curb, street curb parking.
Okay. I understand. Can the, can the developer come up, please, and explain that a little further than, or, I'm sorry. Thank you. Mm-hmm. Is his mic on?
Oh, there we go. You know, I guess I would say an issue here, uh, and I think as I understand your question, is, um, you know, Mr. Eldridge made a comment about the zoning calculation anticipating that seniors will have, have less, um, you know, vehicles than, than the regular population. I don't know if that statement is true. Um, what I do know is that we have over a thousand units of senior housing in our portfolio, and in our experience, um, a one-to-one ratio is certainly preferable. We only have one development that has less than that, and I believe it is a .75. It is located in Muskegon, and, uh, we have owned and operated this project since it was constructed in, I want to say, 2002, but ever since that time, parking has been constrained. We have been attempting to acquire adjacent lots to find additional parking, and, uh, you know, if you ask any of the residents who live there, what their number one complaint about our project is, it's the lack of adequate parking for their vehicles. You know, I would actually argue that with senior housing, you, you get less driving, so people leave less often, so there are more vehicles in the parking lot during the day rather than fewer. So, you know, I, I hope that that answered your question. The other point of clarification I just want to make is that our request, um, does not include any reduction in green space from, from our original site plan. Um, our impervious land coverage has not changed, um, at all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, uh, Jason, was there anything else you wanted to show to the board that was in that presentation?
It, it just timed out, but really it was just a video rendering of, of our site, if everybody would, would like to see it. I, I know there was a still image that was up there, and given that I only had the 10 minutes, I opted not to, not to show it.
Okay. The board, the board is nodding their heads, I will come down there and unlock that.
Okay, thank you.
I suppose while he's doing that, I'll ask a question. If I look at the report, it's, the intention is to have two buildings, 35 units each, and it was two two-bedrooms and then 33 one-bedrooms per unit, is that, that's what it was intended to be?
There, there seemed to be a discrepancy on the report, I noticed that too, so our, our buildings, the total unit count is correct, there are 70 units, but on the northern building, we are intending to have 36 units, on our southern building, we are intending to have 34, and each of those buildings will have two two-bedroom units for a total of four two-bedrooms and 66 one-bedroom units.
Okay. So then, that's where my, I was coming at it from. My question was, because on, on another page, it says it would bring the num, total number of two-bedroom units to six, but I think you answered that then.
Yeah, I apologize for that.
No, that is fine, I just handed.
Correct. And, and we just added those two bedrooms on, as we're working through our, our design, which really is also the, the crux of why we're back here asking for additional parking is, is a year ago, when we asked for parking, uh, we asked for the most that we thought we could fit on the site, and it wasn't until we really started to get into our, our design that we realized that we, we could accommodate without losing any, um, green space, those eight additional spaces, and that, that is what is driving us to be here today. Our original need has never changed, just our, our assessment of what we could accommodate on the site.
Thank you.
And this is our proposed development site with, with those additional parking spaces.
It's beautiful.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Will this parking area be a keyed or gated?
Will this parking area be keyed or gated access? Something that will only allow the residents to enter, or?
We are showing it with a fence, and we are planning to use controlled access for the parking portion as well, so yes, it will be keyed or gated in order to ensure that it is primarily resident use only and visitor parking.
And then, another thing, as far as the design, for, I, particular, I'm a writer of the county metro program, busing, things of that nature, is there an easy point of access for handicap accessibility outwards, or is it all internal where the buses might need to go through, or the bus, private pickups?
So, we do have a curb cut for drop-off and for metro connect and things of that nature. We also are anticipating the bus stop that is already located at the corner there, and we are always welcoming to, of our local transit authorities to adjust their plans to accommodate our residents, so.
Are those solar panels on the top?
Oh, yes. We are planning to build this, our northern building to something called Passive House International U.S. Standards, or FIES. It is the most rigorous design project that we have ever attempted in terms of green certification, and we just completed the creamery, which is LEED Platinum certified, and the only LEED Platinum certified building in Kalamazoo County. So, when I say this is going to be greener than that, I really mean it. We have big hopes on this one, and I believe it'll be the first Passive House project that is affordable housing and MISTHA finance in the state ever, so we're excited about it.
Good job. Excellent, excellent.
Do you have another question? Is, I really wish I could see an overlay of what was the old plan, what's the new plan for parking, just to get a sense of what's different, or how you managed to get the additional spaces without any green space impact?
Mike, do you want to speak to that? That's a good question, and so, just going back a little bit, our first time here last year for the variance was based on a conditional site plan approval process, which is based on not complete information, but once we had a survey in hand and we really went through it, after we're going through conditional site plan approval at the local level, to then gain, be able to make application to MISTHA, we were working on GIS information. When we got the survey information, we noticed that we had enough depth in there, and if I can leave here and just point out, that this area here, it's basically doing, increasing the solar panels, that's the area that we were able to find a little bit- A little bit more width in that area, and that's where we added that additional parking. It's really internal to the site, won't be viewed by any of the neighbors, and it's really-
We're talking to these spaces here, correct?
No, I'm sorry. Yeah. It's this string here that we were able to find additional parking spaces for. Part of that was because we, the survey indicated that we had enough, just enough width to add that string of parking, and then when we added the two-bed, some of the two-bedroom units, that increased the demand for parking, and also, I would, I know that regulations are written in good faith and all that, but I think one of the things that may not have been taken into account originally is that we have a high propensity of one-bedroom, so that truly is closer to a one-to-one ratio. So, at one time, we had 100% one-bedrooms, and now we've got some two-bedrooms, and then this category of independent living means just that, it's basically multifamily housing, so. But we met the criteria for open space and landscaping, and continues to meet that standard too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pete, were there any mailers sent out?
There was, for this particular case, we had roughly 60 mailings that were sent out, and we did not get any written public comment back.
I will now open the public hearing by inviting those who wish to speak in favor of the request, to please step up to the podium, sign in, and provide us with your name and address. You will have three minutes to speak in favor of the request.
My name is Pat Timore, address 1374 South Village Circle, and we are excited about this project for independent seniors like myself. I am 67 years old, and I can see myself living in a beautiful property like this, and I still drive my car. I have to drive my car to the grocery store, I have to drive my car to my doctor's appointment. I drive my car. So, we envision this facility being filled with people like myself, and to come in at home and have to play the parking spot lottery would greatly deteriorate my quality of life. So, I would urge you to approve the additional six spaces for the residents that will inhabit this beautiful facility, and please don't hold it against us that we didn't ask for enough the first time. Thank you.
All right. So, my name is Hayward Babino. I live at 938 Berkshire Drive. So, just to be open and honest, I am part of the design team for BICE, but I am also a member of Mount Zion Baptist Church. I am a trustee there, so I'm wearing two hats on this project. But the perspective I'm trying to come at you now is from the perspective of a member of Mount Zion, and also a person that has two parents that are 62 and 65. My dad is in a nursing home, he still thinks he can drive. My mom, she's 62, you know, she drives everywhere, you know, because she has to go take care of my dad, so there's a lot of back and forth that she has to do. So, I just want to come also from the fact of the history of the site, all right? I used to go to school at Lincoln, I went there for years, right next to our site. I go to Mount Zion, the church, and then, at one point in time, there was a place called The Post that was right there, which was a club, and I used to try to get in when I was, you know, 21. So, if you look at this site, I'm hearing that people say that you could park on the street. I asked where, you know? If you look at the site there, it's Frank Street, that is an old street, it's a brick street. Just imagine that you have a loved one that's an older person that's trying to maneuver around in a wheelchair or with a cane on a brick street. I don't see it happening. The next street is North Street. If anybody is familiar with the north side, you know there's two major streets on the north side, which is Patterson and North Street, where a lot of cars travel down, North Street, especially after 5:00, when people trying to dodge traffic. So, imagine somebody that's older trying to park on North Street and trying to maneuver with getting out their cars. Also, if you know the history of the north side, you'll know at one, at some point, there was not parking allowed on some of these streets. You know, if you drive over there on North Street, you might see a sign that says no parking, and then, you know, they might have a 12-hour parking or three-hour parking time slot, you know? So, it's kind of hard to maneuver what, you know, somebody's gonna do. Birdie, another major thoroughfare, so people really can't park over there, and then the other street is Edwards, which is a residential street. Then you say, well, we can, you can park in a lot right next to there. Well, you got Lincoln, that school does have a parking lot, but it has a fence around it. So, imagine trying to maneuver, parking in there, and then trying to get out around the fence. The other site is Trash Company, I don't think nobody's gonna park at the parking lot at the Trash Company. I know I'm not, I know y'all probably won't either. So, just take into the consideration the history and what's around that site right now.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Corinne Ellis, address 612 Pearl Street, Kalamazoo, Michigan, 49007. I am a Kalamazoo native. I currently go to Western and work as a school teacher. I am a member of Mount Zion for the past five years, and I'm voting in favor and support for Mount Zion and the future community building project. I believe that the seniors should have a parking spot and space for them to have a good life. I think the parking lot spot is just something small, I'm glad that they are considering the green space and having so much luxury as far as solar panels as well, and I think it is a good idea to increase the parking for this living community.
Thank you.
I'm Betty Dennis. I'm one of the residents here in Kalamazoo. I live at 2516 Lowman Drive, and I'm coming on behalf of those who are disabled. This gentleman here talked about being able to park on the street, and while I am disabled, I do drive, but my car is centered around my disability. And one thing I cannot do is drive, park across the street, and try to get across the street. I need to be where I'm going to be. So, if I'm going into this store, I need to be able to park right there to get into the store. So, I'm hoping that you'll take a look at the fact that, I understand, you may not understand because you don't have a disability, but for those of us who are disabled, we need to be, park where we are going to be. And so, I'm hoping that you will rethink your thoughts when it comes to parking for those who are disabled. When I, if I ever live in this facility, this beautiful facility, I need to be able to park, get into the door, and that's as far as I can go. I can't take groceries across the street and then have to come back and take groceries across the street. So, I'm hoping that you'll rethink your, the thinking around being able to park on the street. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Modine Reeves. I mostly, well, I can say, since 18 months, I've lived on the north side in Kalamazoo. I lived on North Rose Street all my life, and since then, and now I live on West Dunkley. My husband is handicapped. I drive, but it's very important that I have a place that I can get him in and out of. I just want to say I can't wait for this facility to be built, because my name is going to be on one of the first ones.
Ma'am, could-
Thank you.
Could you please repeat your name for the record? I know-
My name is Modine, M-O-D-E-A-N.
Got it?
Is there anyone else interested in speaking in favor of the applicant?
I serve as assistant pastor of Mount Zion Baptist Church, and this project is incredible. One of our things, one of our visions for Kalamazoo, for our church, is a vibrant community living by faith, and we're looking to really minister to the north side, minister to the residents, and to physically build something to increase the value of life, the quality of life is incredible. I'm looking forward to this particular project, and adding six more, eight more, six, eight more parking spaces to increase the quality of life is worth it. It's about people, so this particular variance adjustment really helps to serve people, so that people can live a vibrant life. And as many have already said, all the seniors I know, all of them drive. I only know probably a few that don't, but they're not independently living. All the ones that I know who are independently living, they have at least one vehicle, so at least one vehicle. So, this particular project and this variance, to me, is a no-brainer, that to serve the people, we have to do what's best for them, and what helps them to get around and to enjoy the quality of life. Thank you. Christopher Moore is my name.
Thank you.
My name is Danielle Moore, and I live at 1425 Ashtoma Ridge Trail in Kalamazoo. I support this project because as a 38-year-old, I decide where I'm going based on parking, right? So, I'm like, this meeting, the time of day is fine, but come 5:00, before 5:00, I'm not coming down here, I'm not trying to figure out the parking. So, in support of this project, I just hope that you consider that people, as young as myself, consider what they do based on parking. So, to have a senior or a person well of age have to decide what they're gonna do on their day based on the parking, based on where they live, I just think is unfair, you know, ask, because there are certain places that I don't even go if the parking isn't right. So, to have that as a barrier to my home would be totally, you know, unfair. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Troy Haas, 5218 Green Meadow Road in Kalamazoo, Michigan, and I just want to address, again, like Dr. Moore said, really, the rules and the ordinance are for people. And so, as we're thinking about this, and I hear them say not many people, for example, drive that are seniors, my dad is 80 years old and he's driving. My uncle is 79, he's driving. My mom was 75 and she was still driving. I don't see seniors not driving nowadays. I don't see that happening, and I can't imagine my dad right now, who has arthritis, walking out onto Frank Street on the brick in the wintertime, trying to get in his car. That doesn't sound like a law or a rule or ordinance that I think is just and fair. That's all.
Thank you.
My name is Montrel Porter. I live at 7548 Hampton Oaks Drive, which is in Portage. I live at 7548 Hampton Oaks Drive, which is in Portage, Michigan. But I am for this component, I am a member of Mount Zion. But I also want to speak on behalf as a former property manager here in Kalamazoo. I was the property manager at Spring Valley Crossing located on the east side of Kalamazoo at 2575 Monalavette Road. And as a property manager there, we only had half of the parking spots for the units. There's 55 units there, and we had 27 parking spots. On a daily basis, I would get complaints about inadequate parking due to, one, there was not enough parking for the units, but even thinking about just the services that needed to be offered for those in senior housing. This is a senior housing project that I'm talking about at Spring Valley Crossing as well. So the lack of parking was a hindrance to those, to my residents getting the proper services because we did not always have adequate parking. So people had to park in this located right across from Spring Valley Park, and they would have to park in that, over in the parking structure, parking lot for the parks. And sometimes we'd complain about getting equipment, getting the material that they needed to the residents. So just another thing to consider as you think about these spots, how would services or the service provider be able to also assist and take advantage of those parking? So just another thing to think about. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of the request?
Evening, my name is Vanessa Marzett. My address is 7328 Starbrook in Portage, Michigan. I'm also a member of Mount Zion Baptist Church. I'm also a former detective for Kalamazoo Department of Public Safety. In my career, I've noticed a lot about parking because we had to enforce parking. And as you know, after 2 o'clock, there's no parking on the street. There's some streets that have alternate parking, or you have to get up in the middle of the night and move your car to the other side of the street. We're talking about independent living for seniors. First of all, who's gonna get up and move their car on the other side of the street if that was the case? The other part of that is, after 2 a.m., where are they gonna park? We're talking about parking on the street, they cannot park on the street. So this is really important that, we're talking about seniors living independently, for them to have some place to park. Like my sister Betty said, being handicapped, she needs to be where she needs to park. She needs to be able to get out where she needs to park. So this is really, really important that we consider our seniors when we're talking about parking. It may not be a whole lot talking about eight parking spaces, but those eight parking spaces could mean a whole lot to seniors. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the request? Seeing none, I will now invite those wishing to speak in opposition of the request to please step up to the podium, sign in, and provide us with your name and address. Seeing none, we will move into the call-in comments portion, Mr. Eldredge, if we were able to get the technology up and running on that?
Unfortunately, this evening, we were not able to get the software unlocked, so we are not able to take call-in comments. So my apologies to those that are viewing this from home that wanted to make a comment. We will make sure that we get this fixed in short order.
Thank you. For the board, is there any further discussion or additional questions before establishing the finding of fact?
Madam Chairman, you should close the public hearing before we proceed. Simple statement, the public hearing is closed, will be sufficient.
The public hearing portion is closed. Is there any further discussion or additional questions from the board before establishing the finding of fact? Is there a motion for the finding of fact?
I have a motion for the finding of fact. The finding of fact for ZBA number 23-4-08 located at 2, or 724 and 730 North Berdick and 128 East Frank Street and 709, 713 and 729 East Edwards Street, 121, 125, 129, 131 and 135 East North Street shall include all information included in this notice of public hearing dated May 11th, 2023 in the packet for the city staff provided for this request. There were several speakers on behalf of Holland Development. One was Jason Munis, the VP at Holland Development. Second was Mike Flynn, an architect at Vice. And the third was Dr. Ashmore with Mount Zion Baptist Church. There were no call-in comments due to software failure. There was 60 notices sent out and there were no negative feedback. There were several residents from the area that all spoke in favor of the variance and there was, again, no negative feedback. The finding of fact shall include all facts and comments made during this public hearing tonight. That is the finding of fact for ZBA number 23-4-08.
Is there a motion to approve the finding of fact?
Second.
All of those in favor of accepting the finding of fact, please signify by saying "aye."
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please signify by saying "aye." Motion carried. Now that the finding of fact has been approved, we will have a discussion regarding the applicant's request.
Madam Chair, we should get the, get the motion out on the table prior to the discussion.
For the finding of fact?
Well, the finding of fact is approved, so that next step is making the motion for the actual application.
Yes, and then the discussion is on the motion.
I'm just saying, I move to approve the variance or the request.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion for the variance for... Should I wait till Beth?
Yeah. Excuse me, I'm just gonna step in from it. So Mr. Hohler motioned to approve, he didn't recite the whole application, but...
So just make the motion to second it?
So he, yes, so all you would need to do is second it.
Oh, I second the motion to approve. Okay. Yeah. Thank you. What are y'all hot? I know it's hot. Is that better? Thank you.
Appreciate your understanding, folks.
Madam Chair, would you like me to summarize, and I summarize the motion and the second for the viewing audience?
Please.
So we have, we have a motion by Board Member Hohler to approve the additional eight parking spaces, which would allow, total of 64 off-street parking spaces for this senior housing development. And that motion was seconded by Board Member Harrington.
No discussion.
We will now have discussion regarding the applicant's request.
So my best friend is 85 years old and he drives daily. He's got two cars. And I know that when we take that privilege away from him, we're gonna need a bus full of priests. We're gonna need an entire church for him not to burn down his neighborhood.
Oh, Lord.
I also advocate for handicapped, capable accessibility because as a handicapped individual, 100% blind, I will never drive again. I fully understand the handy, capable need to be able to serve as an independent unit of society. And I know that some of the stresses that come with the County Connect Metro Transit Program are very easily overlooked, and that's where my question came into line with that specifically. I will be in 100% favor of this vote, motion for the following facts is, I believe that it is correctly stated that this should be a one-to-one living relationship with, standard with other types of living. The age has no longer become part of our society as a determining factor of relinquishing somebody's rights to travel in their own vehicle. I also believe that under that same guise, that it is also incumbent upon us not to assume that there may only be even one car per household, there may be two people in a one-bedroom facility, and that would normally dictate two cars. So for those reasons, I believe that this ask is very easily, should be approved.
I'll be voting in favor of the variance. I believe it's a, it's a safety issue and keeping everyone on site is better than parking in the street.
I also have, you have me at, you know, affordable living. And I'm hoping that in the future, we can provide this for non-señors in the same area. So you have me already.
I'll also be in favor of this application. And I am curious about, again, just what the city's perspective is in creating space for walkability and like bike riding in alignment with a project like this. Maybe that's where, I mean, I'm just, I guess I'm just not clear on why the off-street parking and the, like, why this wasn't immediately perceived through the lens of like our elders needing their vehicles. I just don't, maybe it's because you guys wanted to, you know, proliferate the biking and the walkability, I don't know. Is that kind of where you guys were coming from, maybe?
Well, I can answer, you know, in general, this is part of the city's efforts to reduce underutilized asphalt around the city. Adds to the heat island effect, it creates more stormwater management when we have underutilized parking that's built. And then there's the expense of maintaining all this added asphalt. So, you know, that is, that is the reason that we, you know, we have made adjustments to our parking regulations and continue to review our parking regulations.
Thank you. Are there any further comments or questions? Mr. Eldredge, may I have a roll call vote?
Turpinin?
Yes.
Wark?
Yes.
Harrington?
Of course, yes.
McReynolds?
Yes.
Yes. Hohler?
Yep.
Vanden Hamburg?
Yes. The motion to approve this variance request has been granted.
Yeah.
Thank Pastor Moore, see ya. Thanks. I am hot. They're burning up to me. The worst. Hi. They can't be. The most I've seen, yeah. Yeah.
We are now going to move to the next item on our agenda.
I want that, Beth.
Thank you. I've gotta make these corrections for them.
For a minute now?
Okay, sorry. Sorry.
Is that a chocolate fruit, fresh?
No, I think so.
That's what I always get. Twinsies. It better not be no vodka in there. I'm just joking.
Will the board secretary now read the next application into the record?
Okay. An application, am I in it? Shelby, can you hear me? Okay. Sorry. An application for variance for provisions of the zoning ordinance have been filed with the zoning board of appeals by Milestone Senior Services, and they're requesting a dimensional variance from Chapter fifty dash four-point-five-B to authorize the placement of an accessory structure in the front yard along East Vine Street where accessory buildings are not permitted in the front yard. Please note that this request will not change the zoning classification of the properties.
Thank you. Will the applicant please step up to the podium, sign in, provide your name, and explain the request in the ten minutes provided?
Good evening. My name is Adam Harvey. I'm with Glass Associates, design-build contractor representing Milestone Senior Services. This project is located in a unique site. It is a site location that has four streets that surround this site, so everything is technically a front yard. It's Jasper Street, Vine Street, Borman Street, Crosstown Parkway are all sides of this site. So, in our consideration of location of this accessory structure, we looked at all the possibilities, looked at circulation of the site, and determined that the location that we're proposing is actually a more beneficial location for all parties, for the site, for the neighbors, everybody involved. So with me tonight, I also have members of our design team, Lindsey Reed from Intersect Studios, Alex Frazier from Hurley and Stewart, and then Corinne Bradley, the CEO of Milestone's Senior Services, and I'll invite her up to discuss the motion.
Hello, everyone. I want to thank you for the opportunity to come and speak with all of you about this variance. My name's Corinne Bradley, I'm actually the COO of Milestone Senior Services, but I'd like to start by sharing a little bit about our organization briefly. Our mission is to provide options that empower people to thrive in their community. Our vision to be the leading and trusted community provider of innovative services to support independence and dignity. Many people mistake us that we only care for senior citizens. We actually care for all adults over the age of eighteen with disabilities as well as senior citizens. Our home repair department is critical. Last year, we served six-hundred-and-ninety-six individuals. In my neighborhood, we built a ramp for an unfortunate high school student who is now disabled. Not only do we build ramps, we put in safety modifications, we fix steps, we fix roofs, we put in safety devices so that people can remain independent in their community. This pole building not only will provide us with the adequate storage that we need, but we have sixty-nine volunteers that come because they are dedicated to our mission. And they, right now, as you will see in a presentation soon, are working out in the elements. Our lumber is covered with ice and snow that has to be broken off of it in order to even be used. They still show up every single day, especially on Tuesdays, which is what we classify as our Tuesday Toolman. These volunteers are so dedicated that they will work through all weather, but when they were introduced with the idea of having an enclosed structure, that they would be able to house all of their equipment, and be able, in bad weather, to be able to work inside, was more than exciting for them. In fact, they couldn't wait to tell their friends to get more volunteers. The more volunteers we have, the more people we can serve. With that being said, I know that all of you also know that the elderly population is doing nothing but growing. By the year 2060, it's estimated that ninety-eight million Americans will be over the age of sixty-five. That equates to even more services needed, and if we don't have the area and the room in which to be able to build these ramps, to store the equipment needed, that's gonna create wait lists, that's gonna create delays, which then is going to jeopardize the independence of these individuals in their homes and in their communities, that could risk them being institutionalized. The statistics of institutionalization and getting out of it are scary at best. So I do ask that you consider this variance, because this pole building is critical to meeting the needs of these individuals.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lindsey Reed. I'm with Intersect Studio. I'm going to share a little bit of context about our site. So, Milestone currently, the site that we have, we're working with, and the buildings that are on the site are remaining as-is, as part of the scope of this project. Right now, there is the main workplace building and an adjacent nutrition building, which is where the Meals on Wheels program is housed for Kalamazoo and all the surrounding counties. And then along the south end of the site of the nutrition building is the loading area, the loading dock for bringing in food, semi-deliveries for Meals on Wheels, as well as all the outloading to the volunteers every morning who go and distribute Meals on Wheels. So there's a lot going on in the south end of the site, which will become important later, including semi-traffic, volunteer traffic, and things like that. And then, we have, just to the north of the main building of Milestone, you can see here, this is where their current home repair space is. It's tucked right next to their building, and as Corinne mentioned, it's uncovered. And then we have a main passway through the site from Borman to Jasper Street, and then this kind of dog-like area, which is the area in question, that is considered the front yard for Vine Street. We also have electrical substation on by consumers here that is currently just adjacent to our site. And, Alex, do you wanna join? I'll have Alex join me as well.
All right. Alex Frazier with Hurley and Stewart Civil Engineers. I just wanted to touch on a couple of the areas where the building is compliant per the zoning, and kind of explain some of the hardships that we're facing here. So first, to the left, and then the north side of the building, that is technically considered a side yard in between the building and the substation. We feel that placement of the building there would lead to some safety concerns. As was stated earlier, the buildings were storage primarily, and a lot of the construction activity will be taken outside and around the building. That is a main thoroughfare through the site, which gives us concerns about safety, the contractors outside having to deal with traffic, people coming in and out. It's also very highly visible to the event space, so that when they're trying to host private events, there's concerns about noise, visibility, and just overall congestion with people trying to get into the event space. And then the spot to the south, along Crosstown, is technically a compliant location due to a technicality. There is a city lot south of our drive there. Putting in this spot would place the building closer to the right-of-way than I think desired, but also interfere with the loading operations with semi-traffic coming in and out, posing another safety issue. And I would also like to mention really quick, where we have it proposed right now, we're one-hundred-and-ninety to two-hundred feet off of the Vine Street right-of-way, and we're seventy-five feet off of Jasper. So we've tried to tuck it to the south and to the west to try to get it away from the right-of-way, meet the intent of the ordinance, you know, with it being said that it's technically a side, or a front yard. So, yeah.
Here's our building location.
Yeah, here's our proposed site plan. So we're proposing the twelve-hundred-square-foot home repair building on the north side of the site. As I mentioned earlier, it's tucked to the west and to the south, trying to pull it away from the roadway furnages. We feel like it isolates the workers so that they can work on the north side of the building. They're out of traffic movement areas. Safety's number-one goal here, trying to keep everybody, you know, provide a safe work environment. So, I know Corinne had one more thing she wanted to mention.
I know that community surrounding areas is important. We have, our board chair is a member of the Bronson team, who he and his organization fully support this plan as-is. So I just did want to mention that that is supported by Bronson. Unfortunately, we couldn't get a letter due to the timing. We also reached out to some of our other partners, Kalamazoo Valley Community College and Disability Network. They are in support, but again, just couldn't get us a letter in a timely fashion.
I have a question. Is this time? No. Can I ask a question? Can I ask a question? What's in the back? I'm sorry, can you show me on the diagram where the back is? Like, why couldn't it be in the back?
Back here? What's the back?
Where's, I'm sorry, I can't...
You're talking the south end of the site?
Correct. Where it would be in alignment with what the ordinance outlines.
So the yellow area is the compliant area.
The yellow area is the compliant area, okay.
And this was given to us by Peter and by...
Bobby Durkey.
Bobby Durkey. So he did, they provided guidance on this when we first approached them, and they told us that the yellow area is the area that they would allow, or that is compliant per the zoning ordinance. So, what we have here, can you hear me?
I can.
Okay. What we have here is the, this is a driveway that comes off of Borman for semi-trucks.
Okay.
Okay. And then we have the existing loading dock here for semis, and then along the rest of this building is the area where the volunteers for Meals on Wheels pull up, and all the food is brought out from the kitchen that's in this building. So they're there to gather the food, and then they go and deliver.
So Corinne, that's why you're saying it's just not safe right there, because of the semi-truck and all that traffic and stuff? Okay, thank you.
Do you want, should we, is our presentation, would you like us to be done?
Well, we extended the time, because we kind of got into the question-and-answer period, so I would say...
I think one of the last things, I think, we, per the comments that came from the city, there were some concerns about the building not being screened from Vine, from this, we're basically, it's being screened from, I'll show the plan again. We are proposing to screen this building from the south, basically from the main Milestone building, to screen it from the east, from Jasper Street, and then we propose a small island to try to somewhat screen it from Vine Street as well, and then we have the substation on the south, so, which is not, not, I would say, also not, we're almost screening the substation, I would say, in this location. And I think one of the, that was one of the issues that was brought up in the city commons, and certainly we are, you know, open to looking at options to, if, you know, if it's needed to do more screening, either like along the lot line, here on the north from the street, or, you know, some other things that we could, like, that's certainly not a, not a deal breaker at all. Any other thoughts?
Yeah, I guess just to add one more thing on the south end of the site, semi-truck traffic, placement of the building would probably lead it right about where the stormwater basin is proposed. We feel like it might not even be feasible with Meals on Wheels, the canopy that's proposed here, to even get a semi on the site to deliver the food and supplies that they need for Meals on Wheels. One thing I didn't mention either, the site, as you know this area pretty well, it's located in the floodplain, got some serious constraints placing the building, especially on the north side, just north of the primary structure. We'd have to raise that, we're gonna have to raise it where it is, but it's more conducive from an engineering standpoint. We can grade back in and match into the existing, whereas placement of it right across from the event center area in the compliant space would cause us to have to, you know, rip out that whole north side of the site, raise it all up, and make the whole site a lot trickier to come into compliance with the floodplain permit that we're gonna have to pull. So, just wanted to share that. That's all I have.
Thank you. Would staff like to make any comments related to this request?
Sure, sure. And so, I appreciate the detailed explanation, and Ms. Harrington asking about backing up and looking at those two highlighted yellow areas again. So those, because of the way the ordinance is structured, it's very specific about any accessory buildings and where they should be placed on a site. I mean, there's, it's intentional in the residential zone districts, and it's intentional in the commercial zone districts, that the primary structure should be the focal point of the property, and that accessory structure should be placed in the side or rear yards. And so, that's why those two highlighted areas are so significant, because with frontage on this many public streets, you know, it does narrow the opportunities for where an accessory building can be placed in conformance with the ordinance. And so, the applicant was going through the logistics of, you know, trying to utilize one of these two sites. The floodplain discussion and comments were really focused on the fact that because we have areas like this that are within, any new buildings constructed have to be elevated so that, so the floor level of the building has gotta be, I believe it's, don't quote me on this, but I believe it's a foot above the floodplain elevation, whatever that is for this area. So that requires regrading the location where the building is gonna be, and that impacts the area around the structure as well, the proposed structure. So, you know, our concerns and focus was making sure that as this area grows and develops that, you know, these accessory buildings, or this accessory building proposed, and any future accessory buildings are not, you know, that are positioned in a way that future development won't be hindered by the positioning of these accessory buildings, and that, you know, other sites nearby, you know, all... and that, you know, other sites nearby, you know, also aren't, you know, constrained by, you know, what's going on on this particular corner as far as the visibility and the, you know, the blending of developments. And I'm glad to hear there was comments from, there was outreach and comments, I should say, from Bronson because that was, you know, our main concern with the positioning here. The screening on the sides of the accessory building are great except for to the north, which faces right towards the multi-story Bronson Hospital structure. So, you know, with that being said, if, you know, the board is leaning towards this location, I would recommend some additional screening. There was that little outcropping of vegetation shown from where the substation is that would go out in front of where the doors on this accessory building. Yeah, the, yeah, thank you. So, so, yeah, so the north side of that building will have a garage door. The materials will come out of that garage door into the paved space directly in front of the building and that's where the construction will take place. So the only thing, screening that workspace from Bronson Hospital and from Vine Street is really that little outcropping of four shrubs that's shown there, which is, which is just north of the substation. So, you know, additional screening would be recommended to, you know, come up with a way to, you know, really obscure the view, so to speak, of that outdoor workspace from Vine Street, I guess. I hope that's clear. If it's not, please ask me.
I do have a question for you, Pete. If its address was not Jasper and its address was Borman, I think is the street, would that change where the yellow acceptable boxes go? Do you get what I'm saying?
I get, I get what you're saying. And really, it would not. It's because this site is surrounded by public streets, those are all front yards.
So there's no place?
So there, so there, so the reason that there is, there was that yellow highlighted box on the right side of your screen where the loading dock is is because there is a strip of city property directly to the right of the retention pond. So that makes that a side yard. And then the other one would be between the substation and the building. So, you know, so those are, yeah, so that is why those are the only two compliant areas. But you're right, it's technically front yard along Jasper, front yard along East Vine, front yard along Borman Street, and then you've got a little bit along Crosstown Parkway.
I'm curious, what is the building you're planning to put up? It says like 1,200 square feet. Is it just going to be like a 30 by 40 pole barn?
More or less, yeah.
Oh, wait.
Is there a setback from the substation?
Yeah, so exact location from the substation, I can't speak to you right now, but I know we're meeting the zoning code, which I think is a five-foot minimum on a side setback. So we're within that. I think we're trying to get it as close to the property line as we can still so that it doesn't create a grading constraint in having a grade under the property or, you know, install a retaining wall or anything like that. But the intent is to get it as far west as we can.
And is the electrical substation for Bronson Hospital mainly? Okay.
I'm not aware if it is for Bronson or what it serves. I do know that the lines come out and go to the east and cross the creek, continue further. So I'm not sure exactly where they end up or what the function is.
Thank you.
Mr. Behr, would now be a good time to get into some of the specifics and Mr. Eldridge of what having additional screening would look like?
I think that could be reserved for the discussion on the motion.
All right, thank you. I will now open the public hearing by inviting those wishing to speak in favor of the request to please step up to the podium, sign in, and provide us with your name and address. You will have three minutes to speak in favor of the request. All right, seeing none, I will now invite those wishing to speak in opposition of the request to please step up to the podium, sign in, and provide us with your name and address. We are going to pass tonight any call-in comments due to some technical difficulties. The public portion of the hearing is now closed. Is there any further discussion or additional questions before establishing the finding of fact?
You had mentioned that one of the primary uses for the building or, I believe it's Tuesday Toolman, is to, it would be building ramps for accessibility into homes and out of homes. But other types of work are done in addition to the ramp buildings. Was it, I was once told that windows, doors, things like that can be maintained or installed. I don't know what the exact level was, but will there be other works done at this site?
Yes, there will. So we do all home safety modifications. So we will repair steps, we'll repair porches, railings. We do work with other contractors to do HVAC work if somebody needs a new furnace or a water heater. All of that is all inclusive to what we do. So there will be a lot of storage in that building to house a lot of that equipment, especially grab bars and those types of things, as well as all of the lumber that's needed. Yes, this is our, this is our current setup for where we store our volunteers and our staff work.
Okay.
Correct. And unfortunately with our location, there is a lot of theft. So we've been broken into multiple times. We've had trailers stolen, we've had vehicles broken into, so.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Finding of fact?
Wow. Clearly, your organization is doing great work. And I'm wondering, would this be the time now to talk about the additional screening for that north end that faces Bronson Hospital?
Thinking, and ask any questions you want on that.
Okay.
Feasibility of that or whatever you may have.
Okay. Well, Mr. Eldridge, what I'm getting at is I, according to the ordinances and not wanting to have set a precedent for having these types of shelters in the front yard and due to the location and the type of work they do and the fact that Bronson Hospital, even though we don't have a letter, seems to be okay with it, is there something we could put into the recommendation or into the application now?
Well, what can be done to mitigate the placement here is to have a peninsula that comes out from the substation. And I can actually go down to the podium if you want. That'd be easier to see a visual on this.
So you're probably drawing an extra little finger sticking out on the proposed site plan, right?
I'll throw this out and then bring it out and get back with us. Usability. So, so we have this, this sort of extended out tree and shrub plantings. And that was removed from this area. And relocated very big here, so it runs east and west. So that would be to create the screen from Vine Street and from the hospital itself for the outdoor workspace. And then this would be open to allow for the lumber to be brought in and hivers to be trucked out. So really just, I mean, it opens up a view a little bit more from the gas machine side, but along from the gas, we do have some green space. So there's distance, there's, and burning out here as well. So you're going to have some, you know, some man-made and actual vision instructions to help make that, you know, improve that view. This is, you're showing a sense right there. So, so that would be my suggestion and... Sorry, is this on now? I don't know if I'm picking it up.
But the, yeah, it wasn't on now.
Shall we, shall we do check the mic?
Thank you. So, yeah, as I was mentioning, just moving the screening instead of it running north to south, just having it run east to west, going up from the substation. And if the board would like, you know, the applicant could come out and say if that's feasible or not.
I'd like to just ask a question, Peter, back to you about that. So if the screening is, you know, here where you kind of had just mentioned, basically maybe 75 feet out in front of the garage door versus if we were to screen at the lot line, is there kind of a reason or a precedent or a preference for one over the other?
I would say either... I would, I would say that either of those alternatives would work because this would be a combination of tree and shrub plantings.
Okay.
You're breaking the equipment, Pete.
I think either one of those two options would be feasible.
Thank you.
Testing, testing.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the screening along Vine Street would probably be a little more feasible from a accessibility, you know, they are going to have deliveries with flatbed trucks and lumber and things like that. But, yeah, I think both are technically feasible, but, you know, up closer to Vine will allow us the ability to have some more freedom of movement for larger vehicles so they're not working quite as hard to shoehorn themselves in to unload their materials, so.
Another intention of this building too, this 1,200 square feet, most of this building and construction action will be happening inside the building. So there's not a whole lot of construction activity happening that has to happen outside. This 1,200 square feet that's currently outside, the intent is to get that function to be inside.
How tall is the building going to be?
16 feet at the max.
I was curious because when I look at this picture, oh, sorry. Because when I look at the picture here, I'm like, is it going to be tall enough to, from this view, screen the ugly substation behind it? And it might actually be a benefit from the one direction. It might not benefit Bronson from that way, but, and that's why I asked about height. But the substation's going to be there no matter what.
That's right. We can't move that.
No.
Thank you.
So Madam Chair, just to summarize, so staff's recommendation for the additional screening would be, you know, either on the north side of the building or along the north edge of the property by Vine Street. And then staff will work out the additional screening with the applicant.
I'm not clear on, like, the question that she asked about the precedent or the preference. Like, why, why is that preferential to move it that way so that that little peninsula thing juts out? Why is that preferential? I'm still not clear about that.
Because that is the side of the building that has the garage door.
Okay.
And so the materials will come out that door into that space, you know, in front of the building for the, for the actual work to be done. If you're looking through those pictures, you can see how they're doing the assembly, you know, outside on the property.
Right.
That assembly would occur directly in front of the building on the north side.
Okay.
The way I took it is if you came out and had to make an immediate right turn, that was going to, or a left turn to get in, it was going to pose a problem to get into the structure as opposed to if you could put the screening down there, you've got more of a straight shot out and a longer run-up or driveway or whatever to get in there.
I see, okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there a motion for the finding of fact?
Yes. I move that the finding of facts for 9/18 Jasper Street shall include all information included in the public hearing dated April 26, 2023 in the agenda packet staff provided. 28 notices of public hearing were sent and zero responses were received. A public hearing was held for the board, public comments were accepted, as were additional documents and voice messages as follow, there were none. In addition to all the things mentioned, the finding of fact will also include the following. The facts presented regarding circumstances or conditions of the property or structures that are special circumstances or conditions not commonly found on the other lots of structures in the same zone district that made this request unique are that everything, Adam Harvey describes the property as everything is a front yard. The front, the frontage on the property faces all public streets and the location is beneficial to the neighbors. On the location of this structure particularly is beneficial to all the neighbors involved. Goodness, Corinne Bradley came before us and talked about the utility of the project and why it's beneficial because of the services that the structure will enable the mission-based work to be able to move forward in our community. This particular organization doesn't only work with seniors, but all disabled adults over 18 years old. And they need adequate storage to support the, I can't read my handwriting, y'all. To support the storage for the tools and the utilities needed to be able to make sure that adults are remaining independent. to make sure that adults are remaining independent in our community on multiple fronts. The facts presented regarding the cause of the special circumstances are that it's not a non-conforming use to have an accessory structure on the front end of a building, and it's prohibitive to hand-holding all of the materials needed to hold the tools to build, to support the, the, the structures and the, the different things that are needed to support the members of our community. The facts presented regarding whether or not the applicant has denied rights enjoyed by other property owners in the same zoning district, the zoning ordinance does not allow for accessory structures to be built in the front, and that's why this is a need that needs to happen so that they can perform their mission-based work. The facts presented regarding whether or not the action requested in the minimum action, which will make it possible to use the ladder structure in a manner that does not negatively impact the public or meets the spirit of the ordinance, are that this is an issue of safety. So, they're currently performing these tasks outside, and they have had other impediments like theft, and it's just not, it's no longer feasible for them, and they need a structure to be able to do this, I would imagine, in the, in the winter, too. You know, you probably have to build things, and so it makes it seasonal, and that's prohibitive in multiple ways, and they want to make sure that people that are doing this work are being able to be safe in the conforming space, the space that would be in conforming use is just, it's an impediment to safety. That's where the semi-trucks come, Mills on Wheels is there, and they need 1,200 square feet to do home repair and build stuff. The facts presented regarding whether the granting of the variance will adversely affect adjacent land in a material way, you know, I'm still a little unclear about the, what is that called again? We just talked about it. Screening, yes. City staff has outlined, city staff has outlined that they're gonna work with the applicant to make those accommodations, so that it, again, I'm still unclear why that's important, because I think that it's prohibitive if you make turns or, what did you say? What, what did you say that happens if you make a?
It's just gonna make accessing the building probably not prohibitive, but extremely difficult under the circumstances.
Okay.
Especially if you're getting a tractor-trailer of some sort in there.
Okay, thank you. So, please add that to the finding of fact. But outside of that, the, the plan is as it stands, and it's a public record, so, thank you, that's finding of fact.
I support the finding of fact.
Is there a second?
I second that.
All of those in favor accepting the finding of fact, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye. Motion carried. Now that the finding of fact has been approved, is there a motion on the application?
I'd like to make a motion. Oh, I'm sorry.
Now that the finding of fact has been approved, is there a motion on the application to approve the dimensional variance to authorize the placement of an accessory structure in the front yard along East Vine Street where accessory, accessory buildings are not permitted in the front yard? To include staff working with the applicant to provide additional screening on the north side along Vine Street?
That's perfect. Thank you.
I would like to make a motion. I'd like to approve the variance ZBA number 250509 located at 918 Jasper with the one change, moving the screening to the north end of the property, of the building, and access would be on the east end of the building.
Is there a second? Mr. Eldridge, may I have a roll call vote?
Would you like me to pause? See if there's any discussion?
All right, sure. Is there any additional discussion or any further comments on the application?
I would just say that there's two available yellow areas that were acceptable. One of them is only technically available, I think, because of some weird quirk of the land, and with that, that leaves one available. I think where they wanna put it is adjacent to the, one of the acceptable areas, and given the whole of the property is basically front yard, there's no real good places for it, so that one's as fine as any of the others to me, so I would approve it.
I will be a 100% approval of this for the fact that the Tool Tuesday, or the Tuesday twoman program absolutely enthralled me. For years now, I've tried to open up a tool library for the county of Kalamazoo, and the services that are provided through my knowledge of the program are absolutely essential to the responsible and independent living of not only seniors, but of all adults in Kalamazoo and its surrounding areas.
Are there any other further comments? Mr. Eldridge, may I have a roll call vote?
Turpinin?
Yes.
Work?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
McReynolds?
Yes.
Holer?
Yes.
Van den Homburg?
The motion to approve this variance request has been granted. The meeting is adjourned.
Madam Chair, the, the one item I had, and, yeah, you're, you're free to go, I'm sorry. This is, this is related to board officers, but, but the one item I had mentioned as far as additions to the agenda was to discuss the board chair, I'm sorry, board vice chair position. Jared Burdew, our, our board member that had to resign from the board last month due to his recent employment with the city of Kalamazoo, was our vice chair. I have talked to our, our chair, Beth Van den Homburg, about this, and, and our other officer, Remy Harrington, and it was decided that we, we needed a seasoned board member that could step in in a pinch when necessary in that vice chair role, and so I was asked to reach out to Gary Work, and Mr. Work has agreed, you know, if, if, if the board would have him to serve in that role as vice chair. So, so if, you know, if there's, if there's others interested in the, in that position, then, you know, the, the board can go through that process, but if, if the board is comfortable with that, then we just need a motion, a second, and a voice vote.
I make a motion that Gary Work be placed in the position of vice chair for the zoning board of appeals for the remainder of this year's term.
Thank you.
Those in favor of having Gary be our vice chair, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye. All right, motion carried. Mr. Work is our vice chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Okay, you, too.